You said something last week that made me think about what you just said today and I need to do my part so I will find out what I need to do so that we can have a dialogue we can talk.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today, recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval renewal of Cyren Software Services from Karasov Technology Corporation in amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand sixty dollars and sixteen cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIRTSO four two eight eight and any appropriate action. Absolutely, yeah. Well, much more than a dialogue, you're exactly right, it starts with a dialogue but it's some efforts behind it so I think we need to partner on that and we'll continue to do that but why don't you get with Peggy and look at y'all's y'all's schedule and then plug me in and we can we can have that conversation, okay?
I'll do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Husbands.
All right, I need to start more mornings with a prayer breakfast.
I move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of change of scope for RFP zero two one eight two four six two, Denton County Records Preservation and Restoration with Co-File Technologies Incorporated, amount of three hundred forty thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of the purchase of three twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos from Reliable Chevrolet in amount of a hundred and seven thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents through the Sheriff's Association of Texas Cooperative Contract two two dash zero three dash one zero zero eight R.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of the price increase for bid number two two dash two six nine eight, cold mix asphalted concrete with unique paving materials corporation and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
By Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval renewal of bid two two dash two seven zero one, extermination services to Denton County termite and appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G, approval of purchase of construction of two radio towers, site equipment and maintenance for the Denton County P twenty-five regional radio network for Motorola Solutions Incorporated in amount of six million six hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred thirteen dollars over five years through the Houston Galveston Council Cooperative Contract. Was this was this our discussion we're going to hold till after? I was going to say we're going to hold this one till later so we'll withdraw that one for later this morning. Thank you. Next is seven A, approval of setting the fee for the twenty twenty-three tax collection contracts with other entity rates at a rate of one dollar per parcel and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michelle. Michelle French of Texas, as her collectors here, thank you for all of that. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials as presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the district attorney's office, one demotion in the district clerk, two new hires in juvenile probation, one promotion in juvenile probation, and one rehire in the sheriff's office.
Stuff. And I thought there was a. It in my church. You put in a contribution in these jars for the snacks that they have. And I didn't have any change. Well, I had twenty dollars and I didn't want to put twenty dollars in there. I wasn't that happy. So he said. You know, you got to put something in it next week. And I thought. I don't know that I will remember. Maybe I'll remember, but I don't know that I'll put that money in there next week. He said, the commissioners and the judge is the same way as you. You are human. Just say what you need to say and then leave it. I mean, that's what you do. So when I talk to you about those kids that's out there and you you do nothing about it. That I know of, nothing's done. And the fact that we can't get to it. And there's no name on it. There's no boundaries. You do nothing. He said to me, you know, just remember about the money you're supposed to put in that jar. And look at them like you want me to look at you about the money that I need to put in there. Isn't that something? If we just start looking at each other. So about the the kids, the people got killed. Those seven people and gee, where is what is wrong with people?
It's awful.
And I can't, I can't get tied up in that. My grandkids are okay. I should thank God for that. My grandkids and my great grandkids are okay. And I gotta leave that other stuff alone. I can't. I can't get bogged down by that. Same with you. I say, hey, let's do something about cemetery. And I think you don't deal with it. That's that's nothing I can do about that.
Well, Mr. Hudson, I want to thank you for coming this morning and I. I'll make this commitment to you. Is that we would love to visit with you offline about this and you know, you're no stranger to commission. You're no stranger to Commissioners Court. You know how? We have limitations as far as a process, as far as responding and having a dialogue about things, but. If there's ways in which we can improve the cemetery, whether it be privately or publicly participating, we would. Would love to do that. We have done that in the past. And there are legal issues as we've explained to you before. As far as access to that private property that's out there. And so it's a constant. It's a constant problem with cemeteries that are on private land across the state of Texas. And so it's a, that's a real challenge when you talk about getting access to it. As far as the property, the adjacent property owners providing access to at a reasonable time. And so. As I've said before, these open comments are not always the best venue to have those kind of thoughtful. Conversations. And so if you want to get with Peggy and schedule a time, I'll be happy to meet with you and Peggy. Riddler Museum Director, and we have that conversation about that. What's the next steps? I can tell you whether it's public funds or private efforts, you know, the Commissioners Court. I know Commissioner Mitchell and I have cleaned up the last couple of years an African American cemetery down in. Down in Lewisville. And so and we, and it's been a community effort. And so that was not necessarily a county. County effort, but it was a community effort. And so if we can help with the county to make that a priority to the community, we'd. We'd love to partner with you to do that. So these conversations during. Public comments, I think I wanted to respond to you today because I think you're the right spirit this morning about. A partnership. And so we would love to have that conversation with you offline.
You said something last week that made me think about what you just said today, and I need to do my part. So I will find out what I need to do so that we can have a dialogue.
Absolutely. Well, much more than a dialogue. You're exactly right. Starts with a dialogue, but some efforts behind it. So I think we need to partner on that. And we'll continue to do that. But why don't you get with Peggy and look at y'all's schedule? And then plug me in and we can, we can have that conversation. Okay?
I'll do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. I need to start more mornings with a prayer breakfast. All right, I'm looking through here to make sure we. I think we can. I think we can start at the beginning. Members, let's go to the consent agenda. Are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? Or do we have a motion for approval as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, which is approval of. Order making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget. Member request one zero one. Three zero zero for the public health clinical to transfer thirty thousand dollars from medical supplies and. Twenty five hundred from to administrative equipment and. Three thousand one hundred dollars to dues and subscriptions for a total transfer of thirty five thousand six hundred dollars from vaccines to cover any anticipated shortages for the remainder. Of the fiscal year twenty twenty three. And item two E. Approval of budget. Member request one zero one three one zero for child protective services to transfer twenty thousand from. Professional services to training and education for CPS staff training to include adult and infant CPR and any appropriate action. Item five A is approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP Sheriff's Training Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest and. DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A. Approval renewal of Cyren Software Services from Karasov Technology Corporation. An amount of one hundred and twenty two thousand sixty dollars and sixteen cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract. DIR TSO four two eight eight and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B. Approval of change of scope for RFP zero two one eight two four six two Ditten County. Records Preservation and Restoration with Co-File Technologies Incorporated, an amount of three hundred forty thousand dollars. Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item. Six C, approval of the purchase of three twenty twenty three Chevrolet Tahos from Reliable Chevrolet in about a hundred and seven thousand one hundred seventy six. Dollars and eighty five cents through the Sheriff's Association of Texas Cooperative Contract. Two two dash zero three dash one zero zero eight R.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D. Approval of the price increase for bid number two two dash two six nine eight cold mixed asphalted concrete. With unique paving materials corporation and any appropriate action. By Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E. Approval renewal of bid two two dash two seven zero one extermination services to Ditten County term out any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is. Item six F, approval of award ITV dash two three dash two seven four seven. Printed materials to gains with wholesale printing and packaging. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G. Approval of purchase of construction of two radio towers, site equipment. And maintenance for the Ditten County P twenty five regional radio network. From Motorola Solutions Incorporated, an amount of six million, six hundred ninety one thousand. Four hundred thirteen dollars over five years through the Houston Galveston Council Cooperative Contract. Was this, was this our discussion we're going to hold till after? I was going to say we're going to hold this one. Till later. So we'll withdraw that one for later this morning. Thank you. Next is seven A, approval of setting the fee for the twenty twenty three tax collection contracts. With other entity rates at a rate of one dollar per parcel and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michelle. Michelle French of Texas, Assistant Collectors here. Thank you for. All of that. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the district attorney's office. One demotion in the district clerk. Two new hires in juvenile probation. One promotion in juvenile probation. And one rehire in the sheriff's office.
Perfect. Thank you. This is presented for recording purposes only. Thank you, Gustavo. Next is nine A, our approval of a memorandum of understanding. Between the Department of State Health Services, Dishes, and the Ditten County Public Health to treat and control the spread of infectious disease across Texas through the U.S. Federal Government. Three four zero B drug pricing program and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is. Ten A, approval of the final plat for the South Hickory Estates. This is lots. One through twenty one block A. This is thirty seven point six zero two acres located in Commissioner Precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Will. Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B, approval of the final plat for the. Coke Acres Edition. This is lots one through five, block one. This is thirteen point seven six eight acres located in Commissioner Precinct one. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the. Pardon me, twenty twenty three. Agency agreement between Clearview AI Incorporated and the Ditten County Sheriff's Office for the use of their facial recognition program and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B. Approval of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four interlocal agreements for shared governance, communications and dispatch services system. Between Ditten County and the Towne Crossroads Police Department, Elm Ridge Water Control and Improvement District of Ditten County. And the Lake Dallas Police Department and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen A, discussion on a possible action related to disaster declaration and executive order and any appropriate action. I will say that this is our. Last time to have, there'll be no action on this item. This is our last time. The federal. Declaration, emergency declaration expires on May eleventh of this week related to COVID. We will have an agenda item next week and wrapping up all of our COVID efforts and going through the efforts that the county went through the last three years. So this is our last agenda item for that. Let's go to item thirteen. There'll be no action. Item thirteen B is approval of the ride away of Ditten County Corporate Fund request to fulfill the allocation of American. Rescue Plan for Housing Assistance, Nonprofit Assistance and Food Assistance Due to COVID nineteen and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next. We're going to pull thirteen C. They'll be resubmitted. Let's go to fourteen A, which is approval. Of amended amended twenty twenty three interlocal agreement for professional service between the counties of Tarrant, Dallas, Ditten, Parker and the North. Texas Tollway Authority as members of the Public Employee Benefit Cooperative of. North Texas, the PEBC and the North Central Council, North Central Council of Governments. With Ditten County agreeing to pay the sum of two hundred thirty five thousand, two hundred ninety one. Dollars with funding to come from the employee benefit plan. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen B is approval, the right of way advanced funding agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and Ditten County, Texas for the. FM twenty four ninety nine FM four oh seven intersection project CSJ two six eight one zero one zero two seven. RC S J two six eight one zero one zero. To eight whereby Ditten County will fund ten percent of the fixed cost. Of the right of way acquisition, amount of four thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and ninety cents and ten percent of the reimbursable utility adjustments. For a total commitment of four thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and ninety cents with funding. An amount of four thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and ninety six to come from precinct three discretionary PI bonds order line of eight. One seven five two one nine zero three zero, which should be transferred to miscellaneous projects precinct three order line item. Eight one seven three nine zero nine zero three zero and any appropriate action. Commissioner Mitchell, you want to make the motion? The chair will second. This is a project we've been talking about for a long time. So. We have a motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is. Fourteen C, approval of the right of way advanced funding agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and Ditten County, Texas for the FM four oh seven project from. Cleveland Gibbs Road to I thirty five W, CSJ number thirteen ten zero one zero five zero. RC S S J thirteen ten zero one zero five two whereby Ditten County will fund ten percent of the fixed cost of right of way acquisition, amount of. Two hundred twenty five thousand four hundred fifty eight dollars and seventy cents and ten percent of the reimbursable. Utility adjustments. An amount of ninety one thousand one hundred twenty nine dollars and ten cents for a total commitment. Of three hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy eight. Five hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty cents with funding amount of three hundred sixty. Three hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy eight. Eighty seven dollars and eighty cents to come from the judge discretionary PI bond funds. Order line item eight three seven four three seven nine zero one zero, which shall be transferred to FM. Four oh seven precinct four order line of eight three seven four two four nine zero one zero and any appropriate action. Yes, ma'am. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of the order of. Setting May the twenty third, twenty twenty three at nine AM as the date. In time to conduct a public hearing before the Ditten County Commissioners Court to consider. The proposed installation of parking restriction signs, no parking signs and no overnight commercial parking restriction signs. Within Ditten County Freshwater Supply District number ten, also known as Elm Ridge Water Control and Improvement District. Elm Ridge WCID and Ditten County Commissioner Precinct one. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Would I, would I say thank y'all for y'all's efforts on this, Commissioner? Several requests of information about this.
Been a lot of people helping out with this one. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E. Approval of one, a commercial contract for unimproved property for the purchase by Ditten County, Texas of. Seventy four thousand five hundred eighty square feet of land. This is one point seven one acres at the southwest corner of Rosemead Parkway and Old Ditten Road. Carrollton, Texas, seven five zero zero seven, as further described as a Stone Creek Edition Carrollton ISD Block A Lot Three. In Ditten County, Texas, from the Golden Shamrock Realty Incorporated. For the sales price of one million, six hundred forty thousand, seven sixty dollars plus all applicable closing costs. Including title, insurance policy and boundary survey. And two grant authorization to proceed with closing approval of the. For the Ditten County judge to sign on this, her closing documents and three grant authorization for the Ditten County order to pay earnest money. Amount of sixteen thousand four hundred seven dollars and sixty cents to Freedom Title North within three days of the effective date of the contract and four. With funding to be determined and any appropriate action. This is the Commissioner Precinct two.
Judge, if I may.
Yes, sir.
That's John Felton from the district attorney's office. On item number. Three, it's actually the contracts have been changed to provide for ten days. For the earnest money to be paid. So the effective date is ten days instead of three. And that will also be the same change on item fourteen F. And then on number four with funding. The revised court order will say with funding to come from the permanent improvement fund and any appropriate action. And that will also be the same change on item fourteen F where it says number four, it will say with funding. To come from the permanent improvement fund. Thanks to the, to the auditor for providing that information for me.
Perfect. All right, then let the record reflect those changes by the. Civil DA. So the motion will include those changes. So we have a motion.
Approval with those, those revisions.
All right, we have motion and a second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John. Well, some of the same modifications will go into this next. Motion for fourteen F, which is approval of. One, a commercial contract for unimproved property for the purchase by Ditten County, Texas of one point five acres. At Rosemead Parkway and Way Naca Drive. Carrollton, Texas, seven five zero zero seven, and further described as the H Grooms Abstract. A zero four four zero A Track Fifty. This is one point five acres in Carrollton. From M D J Way Noca LLC for the sales price of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. Plus all applicable closing costs, including title, insurance policy and. Boundary survey, two grant authorization to proceed with closing costs and approval of the Ditten County judge to sign on this, her closing documents, three grant authorization. For the Ditten County order to pay earnest money in the amount of. Eleven thousand, one hundred seven. Dollars and eighty cents to Freedom Title North within three. It's going to say ten days of the effective date of the contract and four. With funding to be determined and any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Yes, with the one revision on that last is the funding from the permanent improvement.
Yeah, with from the PIF. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, if I could just say thank you for the vision of the court on that and looking forward.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for bringing those, those suggestions to the, the court and I. Echo your sentiments. Thank you for the court for being willing to acquire those parcels. Let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Yes, Judge, thank you so much. A couple of things. This week is Correction Officers Appreciation Week and so. I know we don't get to talk about that much, but I want to make sure that everybody understands how important those individuals are for. Helping our sheriff run the. The detention area over there. So thank you so much to those individuals. Something else I think that I would love to bring up and appreciate is the Roden Bridge. Ms. Massey's team from her management down has, has done a phenomenal job for me over the last six months. Not that they didn't before, but, but we've been overwhelmed with a lot of concerns and complaints from citizens and. And they are very attentive, jump right on it. They help us get the answers that we need that we can. Can pass along to our citizens and. And when something needs to be looked at again, they have no problem looking at it again or explaining it ten times to me and in the constituents. So. I, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Massey and her whole team. I really appreciate it. It actually makes my job a whole lot easier. So thank you. That's all I have.
I consider Tina one of our best hires.
Can't disagree.
Knew Tina forever when she was over at Tech Scott and we heard she was going to be retiring. I said, are you going to retire, retire? Or are you going to still work a little bit? She was like, I'm going to still work a little bit. I said, well, good. Come. Play with us. Come play with us. So anyway, fun story.
Thank you, Judge.
I echo your sentiments. The team does a great job. All right, Commissioner Falconer.
Well, first of all, I enjoyed the Lake City's prayer breakfast this morning. It was a very. Inspirational and moving and so that was a great event. Would also just. Mention a few things here. The colony is got a few items, a few events, Bubbles and Butterflies on the thirteenth. World's largest super soaker bottle. That's going to be exciting. And that's May thirteenth at Grandscape. Then in Carrollton, there's the Metrocrest Job Fair on the tenth at the library. Saturdays on the Square Downtown, May thirteenth from six to eight. And Frisco's got coffee with the mayor on the twelfth in the morning. And roll with the council on May thirteenth from ten to one. And I think that's all and. I think that's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have in Flowerman Bike with the Blue, the third annual bike ride in five K. On the thirteenth, eight AM to five PM on Long Prairie Road. Oats on the May thirteenth also in Flowerman Art Festival at Heritage Park, six hundred Spinks Road. On May twelfth in Holland Village, we have movie in the park, seven to ten thirty PM. In Lewisville, we have a bird walk, May thirteenth, seven thirty to ten AM. Also in Lewisville, Friends of Leila BBQ and Bluegrass, May thirteen, five to eight PM. My First Fish, May twentieth in Lewisville, eleven AM to one PM. I'm gonna remind everyone of the free vision screening on May twenty second, govern yourself accordingly, ten AM to twelve PM. Free vision checks in Lewisville on Main Street at the library.
Gotcha.
Especially for your diabetics. It's an important one.
All right. Commissioner Edmondson.
Judge, you already have glasses. You don't need to worry about that.
Yes, I was about to say.
Well, first of all, let me start out by saying I'd like to congratulate. All the newly elected officials in the various municipalities across Ditten County. And I'd also like to say. That our hearts and prayers are with those people in Allen, Texas. Unbelievable. And I'm so proud of that policeman. I don't know his name. They haven't released that yet, but he did what police. And law enforcement are trained to do, which is run to the problem, not away from the problem. So I'd like to just publicly thank him, whoever he may be.
I echo your sentiments.
I'd like to also let everybody know that on May thirteenth, which is the Saturday before Mother's Day. There's a wonderful garden tour here in Ditten County by the Master Gardeners and there's four. Wonderful gardens that you can tour between nine and four, I think it is. And it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. I encourage all of you to take a look at that. You can buy tickets at any of those locations. Then in Ditten, we've got the four to four. Family Fishing Day. So you're catching fish out there at Lewisville. We're catching some in Ditten, too. It's going to be at South Lakes Park on the fourth, pardon me, the thirteenth at nine AM to three PM. We have a night hike on the nineteenth at the Clerk Creek Creek Natural Heritage Center. And then also, we're going to be opening the Waterworks Park in Ditten on the twenty seventh. I know. Lots of families with kiddos have been waiting for that. In Flowerman. Has covered all of those wonderful things that are going on there. I would like to mention. That Trophy Club has a lot going on. And by the way, congratulations, for those of you who may not have noticed. The, the new Trophy Club mayor was a writing candidate. It's very unusual, yes, for a writing candidate to win. But she did. So anyway. The Art and Garden Festival is May twelfth at their town center. Celebration of the Arts, Natural Garden Beauty and Mother's Day. Then they're having two very patriotic celebrations. After all, May is the month in which we celebrate Memorial Day. So they're having a POW MIA ceremony on May twentieth at the Veterans Memorial. And it will include POW MIA veterans, guest speakers and more. And then on the twenty ninth at their Medlin Cemetery. At eleven, ten to eleven AM, they will have a special Memorial Day ceremony. To honor those who have sacrificed for our country. And anyone who can join that, whether you're there or whether you're just there in spirit. Please, let's do remember what Memorial Day is all about. Without those brave people, we would not have the freedoms we do today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Judge, I have one thing. I apologize.
You'll go right ahead.
That I missed and I can't believe I missed it. I just want to thank the HR department and everybody that was involved in our employee luncheon. Appreciation. What a huge success. You guys did a phenomenal job. It was, the weather that you ordered was excellent. I went and spoke to multiple employees within the county and everybody had a wonderful time. And was very appreciative of the, all the food options. So thank you for adding more trucks this year. I think we'll even add a couple more. I think it sounds like next year, but. What a, what a, I mean, an excellent celebration of all of our employees. So. I just want to thank you all, everybody that had a hand in it. It was, it was very well run. And I can't imagine anything other than a huge success from what I understand and what I saw personally. So.
And I want to thank the, you're, you're spot on. And I want to thank the. The officials and department heads who had their, made it a priority and had their staff attend. And so I'm, I'm looking at that. To see the percentage of departmental turnouts because I think that's important. That if we're showing appreciation, we're going through this effort that the, that they actually, the employees actually come.
Well, they get to enjoy it because it was awesome. I mean, it really was. I, I know it was a lot larger than it was last year. And I can only assume that it'll get larger with the people that go back and say, say how wonderful the time they had. And again, I agree. You know, it's, it's so important that.
Everybody's busy, but it's important to take time.
That everybody gets to come and enjoy it. Because we're telling you, thank you.
Exactly.
Commissioner, could I also second your compliments for Tina Massey and the Roden Bridge team? I have the very same thoughts that you do. The calls that I get, all I have to do is talk to Tina and it's handled. And we appreciate it.
Sorry about that, Judge. I appreciate it. Give me the foreback. So I appreciate it.
I would like to remind everybody that Judge Horn's. Visitation will be this Thursday evening at First Baptist Ditten. And we'll also have her, and I'll send an email out to county employees regarding this. We'll also have her funeral service. Friday at two. Isn't that right, Don? Isn't it Friday at two? It's Friday at two, Friday at two at First Baptist. So I want to let everybody know that. So, is it Cheryl? Is it two? Two o'clock. That's almost certain. So as I said, I didn't sound right. Okay, so let's go to item fifteen A. This is Texas Government Code four one eight one eight three F. This is a closed meeting deliberate information which is confidential. Under the Texas Disaster Act related to managing emergent. under the Texas Disaster Act related to managing emergencies and disasters and any appropriate action. And this will be fifteen B, Texas Governor Code five-five-one-zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting deliberate the purchase, lease or value of real property located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Two and Denton County Commissioner Precinct Three, when deliberated in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on, on the position of the government of body in negotiations with a third person and any appropriate action. It is nine forty-eight and we're in executive session.